Order Stanford pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time I'll call Mr. Carpenter up to doers. A okay awards?
Great, we've seen it for years, guys, this is awesome. There's a couple of A okay awards you gotta go to argue. So, an A okay award is an act of kindness, so it brings so many people here. So, we've been able to show peace to children that are A okay awards already at GRM. We can do that jury argument in class, happens on Monday mornings. Or our R and D, uh, our other stuff. So, further ado, we're gonna start, I'm gonna do people better first, come on up. Alright. So, A will be federal security, and then those who can't do, you get them all involved, have them have their kindness. And for that... Right there, alright.
Next up is Olivia Baretto. So, Olivia, if you wanna come on up, she over there, how are you, sweetie pie? I don't know if you remember when you were helping Ms. Gallo and you helped everybody sign into their computers when she was subbing one day in your class, and for that, you get your act of kindness. So, there you go, sweetie pie.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, Indigo, we talked about this, I think it was last beginning buzz, remember when you helped a student at lunch who was upset, and it was a simple just rub on the back and just making sure that they were okay and that they felt safe, and for that is your act of kindness, so please come on up, Indigo. Alright, look, Mom's got her pusher up there. What's that?
I can really go a lot of these things.
You do get a lot of those, yes, you do, Indigo, thank you. Alright, can I have Nadia come up, please, Nadia, come on up. So, this one really is great, cuz it deals with writing too. Do you remember when you were being a pen pal with Mrs. Counts? And she wrote you and you wrote her back? I mean, she could not have been happier, and for that, Nadia, you get your act of kindness award. Alright, there it is. James Grant, I think I saw James here, there he is, come on up, James. So, again, this was another event where you saw a classmate upset in the lunchroom, and you're able to console them, let them know it's gonna be alright, and guess what? That classmate was better for it, and for that, that's your act of kindness, my man. Alright, thank you, there you go. Gunner, come on up, I saw Gunner come in previously. So, classmate again, starts to cry, having a tough day, and Gunner was able to just pat the student on the back and just comfort that student, and that student had a great rest of the day. And so, for that, Gunner, you have your act of kindness, alright bud? There you go. Logan Wilcox, right here in the front, hair looks great, bud. Alright, do you remember when you supported a classmate when they were reading during small group work? Right, you helped the entire, and the classmen understood where they were in the reading and what the text was about, and this was from your teacher, Ms. Magery. Alright bud, keep up the great work. Alright, there you go. Riddick, come on up. Riddick was here by himself earlier, I asked him if he drove himself, cuz he was the only one here, nice job, buddy. Soon enough, right bud?
Soon enough.
Alright, so, this was Riddick, and this is one of the things that really is close to my heart too. Riddick was walking through the hallway, saw a pile of food that had fallen on the floor, he went grabbed a paper towel, picked it up, threw it away, nobody asked him, it was just, you know, what we expect at GRM, and for Riddick, there you go bud, your act of kindness.
Thank you.
Thank you, buddy. And I'm gonna ask two people to come up here, I think they both got here now, give me one second. They came in. Alright, I think I need Mason DeJesus and Kiran, please, come on up. There it is, perfect. So, if you've ever been to lunch at GRM, we have a lot of students that have to get through the lunch line and a lot of students that order lunch, so what happens is the trays stack up sometimes pretty high, and occasionally they fall down on the floor. So, these guys got up from their chairs at the cafeteria, walked right over, picked up the trays, put them back, which is really, really helpful, so for that, boys, you get your A okay awards, alright? Thank you. I really appreciate everybody coming out tonight, this is such a great showing for GRM, and I really appreciate it in the Eldred Central School District, so thank you so very, very much. Mr. Hallack will give your his...
Do you have Mullins?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see you guys over there, yes, I do. Sorry, you snuck into the back, sorry, Mullins.
I'm sure he didn't come for being bored at the meeting.
And Lincoln, I apologize, you were a part of that crew as well, so come on up, bud. He was helping with the cafeteria trays as well, sorry to bring you up with your peers, alright? But there you go, buddy. Right there, and that's what we want from our sixth graders, right? Is there anybody I missed? Tina, Jed, you're A okay, anybody?
You're A okay.
It's like Oprah, right, you get an A okay, you get an A okay. Alright, thank you, Mr. Hallack, Superintendent Ferrera, thank you, thank you everyone for coming.
At this time, you guys are more welcome to stay and be bored, or go on home and you will not insult us if you leave, honestly.
Have a great night, everybody.
Have a good night, stay warm. Go home and listen to your furnaces run. Or keep feeding the wood stove one to the other.
Bob is warm up next week, right?
Yeah, Stacy's sick. Stacy was home all day sick, and then you think about the movie.
She has been sick?
Yeah, she's all, she's all bad, actually. I never did this, it's all good.
You're fine. Does she never forget anything?
No, yeah. On your way down to the corner, you can get one.
Whole crowd.
What's that?
That was a whole crowd.
Yeah, it was a crowd. Most people I think we ever had in a meeting. And you're leaving. I swear to God, we can hold these in a phone booth. Lisa, for the record, Stacy's been out sick and she forgot all about the meeting, she didn't even go to work today. Cuz I texted her to make sure she was okay coming home or something, so. She says, "Yeah, I'm okay." I says, "There's a meeting."
It's been going around.
She's been homesick all day, so. She didn't even give it a thought. Caleb, I'll let you explain the volunteer firefighter.
Okay, so, well, I lost most of the public, but I'll explain it to you guys.
Go quick.
The volunteer firefighter and ambulance worker tax exemption, we currently have one right now, but it's capped. It's capped at only $20,000 in assessed value. This removes the cap, so basically what it does is if you're a firefighter, volunteer, ambulance corps worker, and you sign up with the assessor by March 1st of this year, you'll get a 10% reduction, you basically get a 10% tax cut on your school taxes without a cap. So, if you, you have to have worked for two years as a volunteer firefighter or ambulance worker. If you don't sign up by March 1st, and I'm gonna advertise it and try to get the word out there, then you're still gonna be on the old one, or, you know, you're not gonna get it. But it shouldn't affect taxes too much, even if we have a ton of people come out and sign up for it, I think the most, anybody's taxes will go up because of this, is a dollar or two total, I mean, for the year. So, that's what this does, basically, is it makes the volunteer tax break a little bit better. And if you guys have any questions, if not, I'll read this and you can vote on it. Any questions, or should I start the reading?
Well, hold on, it's public.
Oh, obviously not. Well, yeah, that's... Okay. Volunteer fighter and ambulance worker tax exemption resolution for the Eldred Central School District. Whereas, New York Real Property Tax Law Section 466A was enacted to provide eligible volunteer firefighters and volunteer ambulance workers with a partial real property tax exemption from school taxes on real property owned by the eligible volunteer firefighter or volunteer ambulance worker, so long as the school district in which the real property is located, after public hearing, adopts a resolution authorizing the exemption subject to the requirements of the New York Real Property Tax Law Section 466A. And, whereas, New York Real Property Tax Law Section 466A also allows the school district to provide certain additional benefits applicable to this partial exemption from school taxes, so long as the school district which has authorized the exemption under Section 466A adopts a resolution authorizing such additional benefits. Now, therefore be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Eldred Central School District hereby authorizes the application of the volunteer firefighter and ambulance worker real property tax exemption as contained in New York Real Property Tax Law Section 466A in the amount of 10% of the assessed property value. And be it further resolved that under New York Real Property Tax Law Section 466A, Section 2D, the Board of Education establishes a minimum service requirement for each applicant to be two years. And be it further resolved that according to New York Real Property Tax Law Section 466A6, the Board of Education designates that an application for exemption must be made to the assessor's office. Be it further resolved that the Eldred Central School District thus hereby grant an otherwise eligible volunteer firefighter or volunteer ambulance worker the exemption provided for in this resolution for the remainder of his or her life if the eligible volunteer firefighter or ambulance worker accrues more than 20 years of active service and is so certified by the authority having jurisdiction for the incorporated volunteer fire company, fire department, or volunteer ambulance service. Be it further resolved that the Eldred Central School District thus hereby grant an exemption according to the New York Real Property Tax Law 466A to a deceased enrolled member's unremarried spouse if such a member is killed in the line of duty subject to the requirements outlined in New York Real Property Tax Law 466A4 and New York Real Property Tax Law 466A5. Recommended resolution, approval by the Eldred... Oh, that's to see you guys now.
Approval by the Eldred Central School District Board of Education for the volunteer firefighter and ambulance worker tax exemptions for a reduction in the amount of 10% of the assessed property value. I'll take a motion. Motion by Kristen, second by Nancy. All in favor? Aye. Ayes have it. Ms. Ferrera, you're up.
Alright, so I have a couple of things. I actually was, right before Christmas in the right one, when we got back, I applied for an imagination, it's Dolly Parton's Imagination Library Grant. That has been submitted, actually spent a little time today with that imagination library people. We are ready to go, they literally just have to turn us on. What this program is, is any child from birth to age five gets a free book mailed to their house every month. And then, pairs do have to register, I have the dashboard and everything. Every book that goes to them is developmentally correct, and like, your first book when you're born could be The Hungry Caterpillar, which we tend to remember that from our elementary school. So, each month, and then, so they have to register. This is basically $2.61 per kid for the year. So, we looked at it for five years, we have, according to the US Census, we have 160 children that live within our district, and that could be eligible for this. And so, over a five-year period, I mapped it out, it would cost us about $8,200, the state is saying, and I applied for that grant as well, that they'll pay half of it, but that's for five years. And they, you know, one, it really pushes the literacy piece, two, we will also be the first in Sullivan County to do this. I'd just like to be line leader, and then hopefully, once we do it, then it'll push the other districts to also include. So, it's based off of our bulk postal permit, I had to spend some time in Port Jervis talking to them to get the permit number, cuz we were supposed to give them a letter. Apparently, we got bulk postal mail since 1977, so don't have that letter, but they do have our code and everything. So, as soon as that is ready to go, then we'll launch it, we're gonna post, put it on Facebook, and we'll send it out to everybody, so it is any family that live within our district mounds that have a child from zero to five. So, we're gonna start there. Governor Hochul did sign the maximum temperature into school bill, and they are gonna tweak some of that language, but we do have to be cognizant of that, and that will also go into our school-wide, district-wide safety plans. And basically, they are saying, an extreme heat condition day is when the classrooms are 82 degrees or higher as measured three feet from the floor in a shaded area near the center of the room. That is literally from the law, and they give us lists to mitigate things like that. So, you will see that addition to our district-wide safety plans. They're supposed to also give us back some amendments to that law regarding what is fine in language. This week, on Tuesday and Wednesday, we do have our legal services interviews. They will take place in the conference room over here, and basically, we're gonna open the meeting and then go right to exec session, do the legal interviews, and no business will be conducted after the interviews. And then, just a reminder, it's a random day, it seems like a random day. Wednesday, January 29th, that is the Lunar New Year. This will be the first year New York State schools are closed for that. This is a floating holiday, so for next year, it is in February, and it is the day after President's Day. So, every year it's gonna be different, and if it falls on a weekend, we don't have to make it up on a Friday or a Monday. So, this year it is on Wednesday, January 29th, and it's all public schools are closed. So, the district will be closed on that random Wednesday. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, any questions from the board? At all? All good? Very good. Secondary principal report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hallack. So, here's my report, I wanna talk about attendance real quick, from, this is from November 13th to January 6th, so pretty recent, and around the holidays, people are going away and sicknesses are going around, so the total for JSHS was 90.38. We definitely looking to improve that as we head into 2025, wanna get kids to school. I do wanna say that our VOTEC attendance has been a lot better this year though. Close to like, you know, like 97% of the VOTEC kids, about 23 kids are going. They're boarding that bus at 7:20 in the morning in the freezing cold, and they're going up there. So, I've been happy with that, cuz last year that was not that great. But attendance, hopefully, in the new year going up. Academic outcomes, we're working with GRM on researching a new math program. I believe we have a meeting tomorrow to talk more about it. We need a new math program for the district. Catch My Breath curriculum is still being taught in our Health 7 classes. I think there's a couple more dates that Sullivan 180 will be here presenting that to our seventh graders. Again, that's the vaping prevention program that's offered through Sullivan 180, free of charge. It's a free of charge, it's a no-cost website as well that kids and parents can access at any time. The Earth Defenders Program is wrapping up, there are six sessions with Health Class, Environmental Science Class, Food and Nutrition, and Career and Tech 8. I think there's like one more session left of that. We had STAR testing that took place Tuesday, January 7th, that was during third and fourth period. Again, this gives us a benchmark in the middle of the year of where our kids are at, reading ELA-wise and math-wise. So, we encourage the kids to try their best, and we'll take that test again in the springtime. We are also continuing work on the Seal of Civic Readiness and the Seal of Bi-Literacy. I don't know if I've mentioned that before, but that's for the world language. If kids get a seal in bi-literacy, it's that they're proficient in ELA, but also whatever language they're taking, French or Spanish. So, we're kinda working with Port Jervis a little bit on what they do, cuz they have a bigger population, and we're meeting with those teachers. The Seal of Civic Readiness is, we have a course that's running in the spring that hopefully, some of our students will take, and they'll do a project to present to a, kind of a committee, and they'll get them that pathway, and that's a seal that goes right on their diploma. So, it seems that the state is heading more towards these pathways. So, we wanna get ahead of the game and start looking into these, you know, deeper, to give our students these opportunities. Just some miscellaneous stuff, I applied for, I don't know how to call it a grant, but it was kind of a pilot program. It's the Hope Squad program, I might have imagined it in November. The Hope Squad program, it's through Sullivan 180. The Junior Senior High School was chosen, along with Fallsburg High School, I believe. We're gonna be funded for the next three years in this suicide prevention program, but it's also a social-emotional program as well. They require you to have four advisors, and I only have three listed here, and myself, Mrs. Littledies, and Mrs. Gordick, but I'm happy to report, our new social worker, Mrs. Livich, is gonna be the fourth advisor as well. So, we have four advisors, we're being trained January 22nd, and it's not us doing it, we are trained, but it's the students that are going to be kind of a peer mentoring program. So, looking forward to that, and it's funded through Sullivan 180 and the Hope Squad, so excited. We had a student recognition assembly that took place right before Thanksgiving, I believe it is, right? Yes, November 25th, that was during lunch periods, recognized kids for perfect attendance, honor roll, high honor roll, principals list, and we also are continuing our Shining Star Awards. Maybe the kids that are getting, you know, the best grades but are really giving that effort in those classes, we also recognize them in each subject area. We also had a winter concert that took place on December 17th, it was a great event, with very talented students. A very nice job by Mr. Nivison, I also think it was a very good decision that we made this year. We combined our junior high chorus and our senior high chorus, and the presence on the stage, you felt it. It really was, you know, versus having five or six kids that were doing each. We had about 25 kids that were up there singing those songs, so it was really, it worked out really nice. Just important dates, we have a PTS meeting, PTSA meeting coming up on January 16th, and we also have the Martin Luther King Youth Summit Trip, which is January 17th. And then, our January region exams are also coming on January 21st to the 24th. I received the key for the box today in the mail from New York State, so, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Conklin, any questions from the board? All good? Student, what's his name?
Hello.
Connor?
So, I hope you're all doing well. So, for the student council report, for current school activities, we had five students from the high school band, the concert band be selected for the all-county jazz band, so that's good. We also, on another note for the band, we had a few band students that will be heading off to the Mary Wood Senior Wind Band Celebration, which is sometime later this month, I think around the 20th. Moving on to extracurricular activities, the coding club is planning to hold coding workshops at the elementary school after Martin Luther King Day. I think that's supposed to go for six weeks, depending on attendance. From a lot of data, they're just continuing to host math tutoring every Tuesday. The National Honor Society will be hosting a blood drive on February 12th, so if anyone's interested, that's there. The National Junior Honor Society gave out cookies to the eighth grade class for winning the food drive they host in December, and they're now planning for a spring project, which could be possibly an egg hunt at the elementary school. For the art club, they're still just working on some murals for the hallways around the school and such. And to conclude it, the sports, they're continuing, and on a good note, the boys varsity basketball is currently 4-2. That concludes my report, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Connor, any questions for Connor? All good? Mr. Carpenter?
Thank you, Mr. Hallack. So, speaking about attendance, just like Mr. Conklin did at the junior-senior high school, we're right now standing at 93.90%, so right before the holiday break, we were sitting at 94.22%. But again, it's a time that's a little difficult, and at GRM, we've seen a significant rise in high fevers, RSV, and some other things going on, so we've had some of those little kids out for a little bit. But our goal still stands at 95%, and I expect to improve that as the weather improves moving forward. One good note on enrollment, I think it might have been addressed at a previous board meeting, but our pre-K enrollment right now currently sits at 35 students, which is great. And so, we expect next year to see that enrollment as well, which is wonderful. Enrollment overall in our building has improved as well. So, to give everyone a little perspective, when I began at GRM, we started with, on July 1st, 2021, we started with 254 students. That dropped as low as 217 students at the end of my second year. We're now back up to 249 students at GRM. We have had approximately 25 new families come into the district just this year from the start of the school year, which is wonderful. So, with a full pre-K next year as well, we'll have a good amount of students at GRM, which will be wonderful. Because our sixth grade is one of our larger classes in the district, they have like 39 kids in it, and so, to be able to backfill the class that just left with the 35 pre-Ks, and we usually get about four or five new kindergartners who don't attend our pre-K program. So, that's all good news at GRM. I attended the New York State Education Department's literacy briefs at Sullivan County Bosse's on Tuesday. A lot of great information coming out from how we are supposed to hit the big six pillars in literacy and how we're going to do that with our best instructional practices. And so, there's a lot of good information there, and we debriefed the following day as well. For our countywide reading challenge, GRM students have read over 750 books prior to winter break. We have our STAR winner benchmark that'll take place at the last two weeks of January. In math, as Mr. Conklin stated, we're looking for a new math program for the district as a whole that connects both the vertical, so we can vertically align our curriculum in math from K through 8 and ultimately, K through 12. I'd like to give a shout out to Connor White, our student representative. He has set up a National Honor Society tutoring sessions on Tuesdays and Thursdays at GRM. We have seven students that show up every Tuesday and Thursday. I've spoken through to all the teachers, we have three sixth grade boys, and we have four fourth grade girls. And the fourth grade girls are doing a phenomenal job as they're just beginning to learn how to divide. And the additional hour, well, two hours, cuz it's twice a week, have really helped. And so, Mrs. Trotta, our fourth grade math teacher, has definitely seen a difference. So, I talked about this with you today and on Tuesday, Connor, and I appreciate what you and Jake Gata and your brother Gavin are doing as well for coming down and helping those students at GRM. And the best part is, it's free. So, it's been wonderful, but just to see that student improvement, and they're coming, and they're excited to be there. And our National Honor Society students at the high school do a really good job of motivating those students at GRM. A shout out to Allison Brown, who's our art teacher at GRM. She applied for and is going to be receiving a STEAM grant, which is gonna come with a number of significant STEAM activities for her to perform. I was in a second grade classroom today where she performed STEAM, and so what they were building today were buildings out of cardboard and other pieces of plastic, and they have these coated little bumblebees that can run through the maze, and so the kids will create the maze and the bumblebees will run through it. It's pretty, it's pretty awesome to see our little six and seven-year-olds doing that. We will begin our DARE instruction next week, so DARE instruction will start for our fifth graders next week at GRM. And at next month's board meeting, we will induct my student council that was elected in November. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Carpenter, any questions, Fran? All good, moving on. Mr. Wizard?
Alright, mine should be pretty quick. So, the school tax cap is out, it's 2.8% this year. That could go up or down very small now, but it's not gonna change drastically. I would suggest you go to the cap, because 2.8% is about what our expenses are gonna go up each year. We're in the process of doing a five-year facilities plan. Savin Engineers is preparing that for us, it's due March 1st. We will give you guys a draft as soon as we have one, and that just kinda maps out anything we're gonna do to our facilities over the next five years. Probably going to have to incorporate things for cooling with this new max heat temperature bill that was passed. The audit was completed December 18th, excluding a one-time clawback for transportation aid. We'd have a surplus of $139,000. Our fund balance remains above 10%, it's right around 12. They recommend that you have between 10 and 20. Obviously, I'd like to get us closer to 20, but we're above the 10, which gives us a zero fiscal stress score again. We're still above the 4%, just barely, like 4.2, so it's nothing to worry about that we have to spend down of unappropriated. Just to explain again, in case you don't remember, there's two parts to your fund balance. The unappropriated is what we, is our rainy day fund. They don't, you're not supposed to keep more than 4%. We're at like 4.2, last year we were at 3.8, I like to keep it right around 4. It's almost impossible to keep it at exactly 4, but we're keeping it right around 4. And then, the rest of the 6% that we have, or 8% actually, that we have is stuff that we set aside for paying out people's vacation and the repair reserve and things like that. So, we're in good shape still financially, we should still have a low to zero fiscal stress score. Governor Hochul has recently come out, she hasn't put out her, the January aid run yet, but at a recent press conference has walked back any statements about getting rid of that Hold Save Harmless. So, for this year at least, I can't guarantee any future years, but for this year at least, the cuts appear to be off the table.
Election year.
And that's all I have for you.
How we doing with the bond?
The bond, we're still right on budget, we have about $236,000 of wiggle room in case, cuz stuff could come up. And once we have a clearer picture of what it's gonna look like, once they put the track in, we'll kinda come together with how to spend the remaining funds.
Is the track included at 260 or no?
Oh, yeah, the track is, but not any change orders for the track.
Right, so the track, so we still have 260, and that's, we're not taking that for the track?
No.
No, no, yeah, that's 260 is what we have, including the contract we've signed for the, for the track. So, barring any additional change orders. And it includes all of the change orders to date, including ones that haven't been signed yet but that we're aware of.
So, we're good?
Yeah.
We're gonna be able to do that ramp, you think?
And we may actually have a little bit more, depending on how much interest I earn on the money that we have left, cuz we haven't spent it all yet.
Good, very good. Any questions, Rakil? All good? Only thing I have is, when I still go out into town and go out and around and keep my ear to the ground, and alls I keep hearing is about how great the field is. They're still talking about it. Seriously, every place I go, it's like, everybody's talking about this field up here, so, it's a good thing. Moving on to public comment. Okay, moving on. I will, let's see, there's nothing else through here, right? Alright. I need a motion to approve consent items 8.01 through 11.04.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Amador.
I'll second.
Seconded by Nancy. Any discussion? I'll announce it now, and I'll announce it later, but there is a change in the meeting for February. It's going to be February 13th. From, I'm sorry, from February 13th to February 6th. So it's a week early. My bad, I didn't read it all the way through. Right, from February, thank you, Lisa. From the 13th to the 6th, it's going to be a week early. It's the first Thursday of the month, so I'll announce it again in a little bit. That being done, new business. I have two walk-on motions that I need to read.
Do we vote on the consent agenda?
Oh, yeah. I'm sorry. I'm motioning, you can vote on it. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Amador. I got into the meeting there, and yeah, that was a discussion. All right. Be resolved upon a recommendation of superintendent of schools to abolish one principal account clerk full-time position effective December 31st, 2024. Be it further resolved to create one CSEA, senior account clerk typist, part-time position effective January 10th, 2025. I have a motion.
I'll make that motion.
I do have a second. We'll have discussion. We have a second. Second might answer you. Discussion.
What's the difference between the two?
It's going back into the union. So the full-time is out of the union, and she resigned as we accepted it last meeting. And we're creating a part-time position to save money. They feel that, Gil's office feels that they can do it with a part-time position, and part-time position goes back into the union, the CSEA union.
People were interviewed for this, right?
Yes. It was, it was out.
This position also was the position that originally. Hired. So she started as a senior count clerk, principal count clerk is the next step up. So she took a test and went up to that one.
And what she does to save the school?
Close to $70,000.
And also on top of this, now it is a civil service position, but when I contacted the civil service office of Sullivan County, they said the list had expired, so we could do a open interview, posting an interview. So we did that. The person that, if, you know, when we appoint that person, it is as provisional, and they do have to take the test. But that meant, because the list had expired, I didn't have to, we didn't have to hire anybody directly from that list.
Understood. Take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Perfect. Ayes have it. Okay. Be resolved motion to approve upon a recommendation of superintendent of schools to appoint Catherine Cosmo to the probationary position of senior clerk, senior count clerk typist, part-time effective February 3rd, 2025. Compensation will be in accordance with the current CSEA contract. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Amador, a second.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Nancy. Discussion.
So as long as she passes the civil service test, then she has.
She keeps the job.
So if she doesn't, then we have to.
Then she is, then we, she gets released, and then we have to, if the list is, there's a new list up, then we have to go to that list.
Post it as a civil service position, so other people can apply for it?
We did post it, but the first thing we do is I contact civil service. And if there is a list, then I get the list of names, and we have to mail the canvas